Okay, we do have a quorum on both sides of the table now. So, are the mics on? They don't sound like they're on. Maybe, yeah, there they go. Thank you very much. Welcome to all of you in the public and here at the table for our joint meeting of the Falls Church City Council and the school board. We're delighted you're all here with us today. Just by way of warning to the folks in the audience, a portion of this meeting may turn into a closed session, in which case you'll be asked to leave and won't be able to stick around for that portion of the meeting. So, we're going to see where that ends up, but that's a distinct possibility this morning. But thank you all for coming out. John, did you have anything you wanted to say, or should we go ahead and get into?
Mrs. Shields.
Okay. Mr. Shields, Dr. Jones, do you have anything you guys would like to start with? I know you prepared some materials for today.
We do. Thank you, Andy. With one option being to proceed with the second phase of the RFP with the request for detailed proposals for the construction of new school facilities and economic development on up to 10 acres of land on the campus site. The other option is the decoupled process, which would basically stand for the proposition of the school procurement process happening on one track and on a parallel track, the city proceed with a request for proposals for the sale of up to 10 acres of land that would be planned and in the comprehensive plan for the types of uses and densities that would be acceptable to the city, and that that happened on a parallel track. So, we want to go into the details of those, but before we present that information, I think the city attorney wanted to just speak about the process of this meeting in terms of what is appropriate for open session and what's appropriate for closed session.
I just wanted to remind everyone, as I sent in an email yesterday, much of, most of the proposals, or the proposals contain substantial amounts of confidential information, and as we move forward, you can discuss the process going forward, but we continue to have an obligation to the proposers to maintain the confidentiality about the substance of any confidential information in their proposals. And so, to the extent you are going to make reference to the substance of the proposals, even without discussing it in detail, but if it's going to be referred to, we should all, we should go into closed session to have that discussion. And if anyone feels at any time that we need to talk about that, about relative merits, things like that, we should, we can just make a motion that we go into closed session and we can have that discussion and then come back into open session to talk about any process going forward as part of the public process. Okay?
Thank you very much. And please feel free to stop us if you feel like we're strained. Step on in and help us out. All right, Mr. Shields?
Okay. Well, I'm going to put up on the screen the documents that we've handed out. And just one thing that you might do, they're stapled together, but for ease of reading, you could de-staple them and then just put them side by side so you can see the timelines. If you can decouple them. And what we'd like to do is sort of handle it in two pieces, to talk about the school pieces of the schedule and then talk about the city, the land use, the development side of the schedule, and present the information in that way. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jones and to first walk through the key milestones for the school procurement process.
Would it be easier to turn off the lights so people can see? Can you guys see back there?
Yeah, this screen is a lot clearer than this one is, but...
And we have the other two working. Thanks, Mayor.
Sure.
Yeah, and I just want to, Mr. Shields, note, I think on the decoupled one, the last date still says December 2020. It should be September 2020 on both of these charts, on the very bottom of that, just to note that change. It should be September 2020 on both of these when the schools would open. And just want to point out that that is a year later now because this process has taken us longer, so we're now looking at a 2020, which is kind of a critical point for us. And then I'm going to ask Bob Jones to come forward from Arcadis to walk us through.
So, when we go back to a decoupled, we're back to the, you know, two-stage process again. So, if we went back and created a conceptual RFP to go out, which would be more like an RFQ, where we would ask for design-build firms to submit their qualifications. And we see if we get a, you know, conceptual RFP back out in July, we should have developer conceptual proposals around, towards the end of August. We would look at shortlisting from that, choosing the three most qualified design-build teams and towards the end of September. And at that point, we would issue the, another detailed RFP to get the actual conceptual design submissions and costs from the three shortlisted firms. And we would look at that towards the end of January and expect to have a selected contractor or team towards the end of February. And on a parallel track, the referendum would need to be, I guess you call that advert, ready to advertise, towards the end of November, and the vote would be in April.
Actually, instead of March.
March, okay.
So, that's, you know, shifting to the city side, the council would be requested to authorize the referendum and, you know, by November to set up a referendum that would occur in March. The reason for the March date for the referendum, under both this and the P3 process, is that there is a primary in June, and under our rules, any special election for referendum cannot occur within 55 days of a general election or a primary. And so, you need to back up 55 days before a primary. That puts you in April. April's an awkward time because that's right in the middle of budget, so we're proposing a referendum in early March so that the results of that referendum then could be folded into the capital improvements program that would be in the budget before the city council.
Do we have questions before we move on on what's been presented so far? Okay. Vice Mayor Conley?
Bob, this says we'd be using the PPEA process to do this. So, it's a similar process to what we've used?
Yes, it's the same process that we've already started, except that instead of having the developer commercial component tied to it, we would just be looking for design-build firms for the school portion only.
So, it would require the same level of confidentiality?
Correct.
With proposals as what we're dealing with right now?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Ms. Conley, I might add, that is how all of our schools have been built to date, so...
So, this would be the same process essentially as every other school we've done. It would just be that the commercial part would be removed, and that would be a separate track that Mr. Shields can describe in further detail as needed. Mr. Snyder?
So, under this scenario, though, how can you figure out what's affordable and how are the citizens going to know how this is all going to be paid for? I mean, you can move forward with anything. And I'm not, this isn't being accusatory. You can move, anybody can move forward with anything, but the citizen's going to ask, how much is this going to cost and is it affordable? So, I'm wondering, in this scenario, if we've got a separate approach, which may or may not be lined up with this, depending on what we decide to do. So, the theory, under one scenario, would be you'd simply go forward with a proposal to the community. We want to build X high school. It will cost X amount, and that's what they're called upon to vote on.
There's an additional component to this. We haven't walked through the general government schedule in detail yet, but, so if you go into, on that right-hand column, the key steps then on the city side would be to initiate the land planning, which would be a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. We would begin that work in July and finish it in the December timeframe and issue a request for proposals for the purchase of that land, so that by the time of the referendum, we'd have proposals in hand and we could go public with the results of that procurement process, that disposition process, to understand the value of the land. Now, that's a very tight schedule. We just need to be very frank about that. But the goal was so that the voters would know, okay, here's an option to help make the school affordable. Here's what we would get for the price of the land. Now, under that planning process, what we would envision is that we would set at a pretty high level what the expectations would be in the comp plan and in the zoning in terms of density and uses. But we would anticipate that the final approval of the development of the acreage would be subject to a special exception, the process which the council is very familiar with. And so, any sale, you know, when we put the RFP out, it would be contingent upon that final special exception approval. But I think that's not terribly unusual in commercial real estate, but that's how we would get the information in terms of what the value of the land would be. So, the voters would have that information as they cast their vote in March.
So, let me just pursue this, if I might, a minute, if I might, Mr. Mayor. So, you'd know what you're getting in terms of a school. It's well detailed. You'd have a cost figure. But this other side, we could zone it, but what if we got no developers that wanted to come in? Or what if the horizon were five or 10 years from now and we had this horrendous gap to afford the schools? I'm just, it, I don't want to put us in a situation where we jeopardize the financial future of the city as an entity. And I think voters are going to want to see, how are we going to pay for this? And is it, how does it fit into tax rates and all the rest of it? We did a lot of that work when we went through Mary Ellen Henderson, and the community was very receptive. But without that, there are going to be a lot of legitimate questions come up about it. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, you've laid out how you would sync the two processes. But it seems to me the one process is relatively firm. You'll do this, 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 and this. You'll come up with your specs. There'll be some community, open community discussion about that. We'll go to a referendum on it, and we'll know how much the school will cost. On the other side, we've got question mark after question mark potential on how we're going to pay for it and how we're going to develop the land.
I think that's, I think that's accurate, and I think that's the nature of the process. And a couple of, I think, kind of key rubbing points on this is that the council would be issued, would be asked to put this on the ballot and hold a special election for the issuance of the bonds for the school without yet knowing what the responses are for your solicitation for the land, because you would put out the RFP about the same time you would authorize the referendum, but you wouldn't have the results of the RFP for the sale of the land back yet. But by the time the voters vote, we will have the results of that procurement process. So, that's one thing I think to be mindful of in this schedule. But I think the other thing to be mindful of, that throughout this process, we will be dealing with a third-party developer. And so, we will have legal agreements. We will have a transaction structure that provides as many guarantees for the city as possible, and we think that we can, there are plenty of examples where we can provide all the assurances as we can for the city. But at the end of the day, it's a third party that we'll be contracting with, and there is the potential that they will not perform. And so, that is just inherent to this process of what we're trying to do, and there's, I think that's true in the P3 process. It's true in the decoupled process, and it's just an aspect of the overall effort.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, let me just proceed with one more question then. Although it's possible under this circumstance, you'd have no third party, depending on how things go.
Yeah, and I think that's...
If we're relying on the market response, you may have totally inadequate responses or no response at all. So, you're, the only point I'm trying to make is you've got a relatively certain set of steps that will produce an outcome by a certain date on the, on the project side. But on the payment side, question, question, and question, things really have to fall in line right, or the voters are going to be confronted with the most, the largest capital project we've ever done with a great deal of uncertainty as to how it's going to be paid for. That's a possible outcome. I'm just trying to explore the potentials and the different alternatives. And I think you've laid out what one, one side of the line might be, but there are a lot of things that can go wrong with that. That's the only point I want to make, is we analyze different ways of moving forward. And I apologize in advance, I'll have to leave for an international call about eight, so, thank you.
Michael? Oh, sorry.
If I could just add on to what Mr. Snyder was saying, I think that when we started the current process, and as you've proposed starting this process, we have left out a critical first step, and that is, what can the city afford? We've just assumed that whatever the schools need, somehow, the city and the community is going to be able to pay for everything that they want. And I think that before we go into, go any further on this process or go forward with the new process, we really need to take a hard look at what we could pay for, and then we need to figure out what we can get on the school side with it. I just think that's the more fiscally responsible way to go. Talking about what Mr. Snyder said, we can't bank on getting any money for the land. So, how much debt can we take on in the short run? That's a question that we've never really confronted, and that's what I think we need to consider before we go forward with anything further.
Michael?
When we talked about decoupling the other time, I guess I was hoping we'd have a non-PPPA process. And to build on Mr. Snyder and Karen's thought, I guess I'm looking for, this is, this seems to me like a PPA process. Is there the potential for one without the PPA process, which is what I thought the decoupling was going to be, where, where maybe the school goes out and finds somebody to build for something smaller or something that's phased, or, you know, but at least there's an option there, because I don't see a comparison. It seems like we're going back to the PPA process. I'm a little off here.
Well, Michael, and actually, you know, Bob can probably explain it better. That's the process we've used for every single school we've done. So, having it tied to commercial development has nothing to do with the PPA process itself.
And Tom, or correct me if I'm wrong, but the only other option other than PPA would almost be to go to a design-bid-build process. So, at that point, you would, instead of having the design builder and knowing what your cost is upfront, you would have to hire an architect. And for a school this size, you know, you'd have to spend about $7 million upfront on an architect to do the whole design, and then go out in the street and get bids. And until it, those numbers come in from the street, you really, I mean, you can be close, but you're really not sure how those bids will come in. But you still have to do the, you know, spend the upfront money on the architect before you can even go out to that point.
So, is that impossible, or is that just more expensive?
Well, I wouldn't say it's more expensive. You just have to be able to spend the money upfront. And where the PPA process gives us a good way to lock them into a guaranteed maximum price, before you really spend a lot of money, you know what the whole thing's going to cost. In the other version, you know, you have to spend the design money upfront, and until it goes out on the street and you get bids in, you're not sure what your final cost is going to be.
But at least the options can be lined up for comparison, if you know what I mean. I mean, you're saying, it's, the feeling here is we're being shoehorned into the PPA process, and at the very least, I think we should have one column that says this is the PPA, and the other one saying, this is what you're, this is what you're, maybe what the design-build approach does is give the PPA process some credibility, but at least let's see it, I think. And I believe that's what folks may, may want to see in the community. At least, I'd like to see it. I mean, it may be $7 million upfront, but maybe there's more control, and at that point, maybe we have more control over the bidding process. And this may be very naive, because I'm not very sure about this, but at the very least, you have some, you know what you're dealing with, because we, I don't know that this PPA process, so far with only two bidders, is fail-safe or whether we'll get anything.
Yeah, they're, you know, even with the PPA, even though they'll submit their conceptual design with their proposal, there's still the entire design process to move through where the owner gets input, and as long as you're not substantially increasing their scope, then, you know, there's that room to influence the design. And I think the design-bid-build, it gives you more control through the whole process, but it also gives you more risk. One of the benefits of PPA is it's a much lower risk option as you move forward through the process, is from a cost standpoint.
And just to clarify, this PPA process is not the one that we've started. This would be a restart and, and a more traditional PPA, the way we've procured Mary Ellen Henderson and the other school facilities since then.
And for further clarification, what is proposed is a new PPA for purely the school portion, and the city side would not necessarily be a PPA, but would be a traditional RFP to purchase the land, correct?
Yeah.
And I tell you, maybe after Ms. Hardy's question, you could go in a little more detail on this government side?
Yeah.
We had some sort of sporadic discussion about if you could just take us through in detail?
Yeah.
What that side would look like after Ms. Hardy's question, I think it'd be helpful. Ms. Hardy?
I believe this school program, or this timeline makes the assumption of the current school programs and the cost that we've estimated around $120 million. Is that correct?
$112.
$112. I think one of the concerns I have is, with the current PPA process and this one, is the sequential nature of kind of the school build and then the construction. And I think to share Mr. Snyder's early concern and Ms. Oliver's concern around minimizing the risks to the city and time to discuss affordability, might behoove us to actually think about revisiting those options on what the school program should look like, because I think that also could help minimize the risk down the road. And what I mean by that is, in this process, I believe it assumes that we get rid of the current school footprint, build a brand-new school, vacate that land so that we can begin development on the private side, and so, you know, has a timeline of three years from the end of, beginning of construction, where we, the city carries that financial risk. So, I think what might be worthwhile discussing is, is there a more parallel process where we collapse, for example, half of the school footprint, kind of consider the modular phased approach, where we begin part of the school construction, vacate some of the land, so the land sale can happen earlier. But I think that would require more upfront time to discuss what should the school program look like, what can we afford. But I think in the end, that also minimizes the financial risk to the city, because we don't have three years where we're paying for the school construction without any private development happening.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think this option has that. It seems very sequential, so I think there might be a more parallel option that we should look at, where we discuss affordability and a revised school program where we could make that happen.
I'd say before we move on, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Jones?
No, I think it's just to clarify, when you say revised school program, what that actually means. Are you talking about making it smaller? Are you talking about, because part of it is, you know, in order for us to have, if we're going to have a new high school, part of that is, we need to go up if we want to compact the footprint. So, what we're really committing to is, on those first couple of years, is starting with your gym, your auditorium, the big spaces, because they need to be on the lower level. Otherwise, we can't have a footprint that's smaller and go up, because we can't put the gym and the auditorium on the top story. So, if we're taking down a portion of the high school, I think certainly we can look at that, but that's kind of what happens here. But we're not going to have the land until we get rid of the high school, and they would be so close to one another, I can't see where we would be doing a job. Feel free to chime in, where you'd have the development happening exactly the same time as the school on that piece of land, just for safety issues.
Yeah, I think the, one of the main problems with that is that you, they'll still be building, you know, say you built half the high school and then tried to, and tear down half of the existing school. Well, then you're trying to run a school out of these two pieces of disjointed buildings, where you're going to have to have students going back and forth while it's still a construction site. So, the, you know, it would get fairly complicated as far as how to, on the safety side, to keep access back and forth between the two buildings while you're also doing construction right around it.
Yeah, so clearly not ideal, but I think there's always going to be things that we have to work around, and, you know, perhaps we also just need more time to discuss the use of the grad center. I know we've talked about that before in closed session, but maybe we also need to more seriously look at, is there an interim trailer option, use of the UVA Virginia Tech site, to work through that?
Let me just clarify, too. You said $112 million. Does that include FFNA, your furniture, fixtures, and equipment? Is that all in, or is that, is there another $6 or $8 million in furniture?
That was all in, yes.
So, $112 million is all in?
And that's middle school as well, the expansion.
Okay. Mr. Shields, could you take us through the city side in a little more detail, and just some of the discussion we just had about, for example, when you would be able to free up the land, and we would issue an RFP to sell parcels or a parcel of land off? How would that work with construction of the school and the like, or what's your, I know you may not have this fully, you know, worked out, but what are your thoughts at this point with respect to your side of this table?
Yeah, as we've talked about throughout this process, that's the, that's the real difficulty of this entire project, is that the potential economic benefit from the sale of the land and the economic development of the land would happen at a minimum two years after we've issued the bonds. So, we've taken on all the risk and the leverage of a major bond issuance about 24 months at a minimum before we receive any benefit from the sale of the land. And so, the P3 process was all about trying to shrink that period and to try to manage that, that risk through a public-private partnership. So, if we decouple, we still will try to accomplish that goal, but it will look a little different. So, the key steps sequentially that need to happen on the city side would be first, to get the land ready to be, to be sold. And so, what we mean by that is do land planning, lay out in the comp plan what we're looking for, and rezone it. We would then issue an RFP for the land sale after that is complete, so that the RFP can cite, here are what our expectations for the development of this land. We'd also want to lay out with clarity what it is we're selling. And so, the schools need to lay out where their school is going to be, and there needs to be a real clear line that we all agree on as to where the school is going to be and what's going to be in private development. That RFP would lay all those details out. We would issue that in the December 2016 timeframe. The proposals back for the purchase of the land would be due in the February timeframe. We would enter into a contract for the sale of the land with contingencies. And the reason we would want a contract for the sale of the land in that February timeframe is so that when we go to the voters, we can say with some certainty, here's, here's the financial picture, in terms of what the school will cost and in terms of what the land proceeds will be.
Mr. Shields, you're talking about the sale of the land. In our original RFP, it said sale or lease.
I'm sorry. I should characterize it as the land transaction.
Okay.
Which may be a sale or a lease. Correct. Thank you for that correction. We would then close on the sale of the land in December 2017 under this schedule. So, what will have happened through that period of time is that the, the schools will go through their permits process. We will have a very clear idea in terms of what the school program cost will be. We would issue the first tranche of bonds for the school construction in that December timeframe, December 2017, and we would want closing of the land coincidental with or prior to the issuance of that first bond issuance. And the goal would be, and this has been a big question mark throughout this process, but the goal that the city has articulated... but the goal that the city has articulated would be to receive a first payment for the value of the land prior to the sale of the bonds. Now, that's a big, that's a big, a big point of discussion in terms of what that means. The developers will not be able to take possession of the land for another 24 months at a minimum. What this actually stands for is they won't take possession of the land until 36 months after the sale. We're, you know, we're trying to crunch that down, but this is, you know, per this schedule, it's 36 months. So that initial payment, if we need that before we issue the bonds, that, there will be most likely a discount associated with that. And that's just the nature of commercial real estate. And so as we go through this process, we want to have with, with our commercial real estate experts, a very clear-eyed understanding of what that discount is likely to be and make a calculated risk assessment of, of how we want to structure that. And that's been a big part of our discussions with the P3 process as well. So those are the key sequential items that we would look for in terms of the land transaction piece of it. One other aspect of this that we would need to do, and we would need to do it in the December timeframe of 2016, is actually carry out a subdivision of the property. And we'll need to do that with the school board and lay out exactly what is being offered for sale and subdivide that from the rest of the school property. That is not on this schedule, but that's, that's an additional step that would need to be taken.
Ms. Oliver and then Ms. Hardy?
So basically, what you've laid out on the general government side is just about the most optimistic scenario that we could expect on the general government side. I mean, you've made a lot of assumptions that we're able to move the process along in the best and timeliest manner. So any impact, any delays anywhere in this process does impact our ability to afford what it is that we're proposing on the school side because this is, you know, decoupled. And I, I would like to see a, a couple of alternative scenarios. What does this look like if we assume we can't sell the land until December of 2020? What does this look like if market conditions are horrible and we actually can't do anything with the land until 2025? I think we need to take a look at that and look at the financial implications of that because I don't think it's a good idea to do this on the basis of the most optimistic scenario. So I'd like to see, a look at the other items, and I'd like to take a look at what the financial implications are. Can we afford this? Would we be in compliance with our own financial policies? You know, what happens if, if that were to happen, a more realistic scenario?
The, let me, just in terms of scheduling, let me ask if I could, for Jim Snyder to speak, in terms of what this, what this land planning process looks like? Because it's a very simplified land process. It would not be a real detailed master planning process. But, Mr. Snyder?
As manager mentioned, we would need to move expeditiously with a relatively simple approach. Presently, the property is not planned on the comprehensive plan, school property, city property. It's not zoned other than R1A, which is a default zoning that the charter and the zoning ordinance zoned it when it came into the city's possession. So even to build a school, you would need to rezone the property to build the kind of school we'd want to build in terms of height, coverage, et cetera. The city is looking at creating revitalization zones, which could include this area. And so that would be a first step that may happen this summer. That's aside from, from this particular area, the idea of protecting ourselves from the proper legislation. And then you might be looking at developing a special revitalization district for education and commercial development and create goals and objectives within that and density ranges. Let's say, for example, up to 10 acres at 2.5 to 4.5 FAR with a preferred range of commercial development at a minimum percentage. Let's say, for example, for just discussion purposes, one-third. And you would rezone the entire property after placing a land use category on the future land use map, for example, B2, which gives you a lot of flexibility. You could also possibly amend B2 to allow, to ensure that you had total control of whatever development is done through a special exception process so that final conceptual plans and site plans would be approved by city council and planning commission. And of course, the school has to go through the planning commission and site plan process as well. So I think that could be done fairly simply. One of the models for this is the Pentagon City area, which had conceptual plan put in place and parcels had targets of density and types of density. It gives a broad framework for what could happen, and then the details get worked out as specific projects get approved. But I think you need to keep it simple. It does not need to be complicated. It could be done relatively quickly if one can agree on, on where we want to go. In terms of planning to figure out where the school should go and where the development should go, I think we have, we have some good insights from the ULI TAP and from also the work that schools did with their test fits on where properties should be developed and where the schools might go. And I think pretty much the conclusion has been the corner of Hancock and Seven is the area where the commercial development should go with the balance of the area being used for schools. So it really depends on whether we can keep it simple. Of course, because you own the property, you have lots of flexibility about what to do and not to do. No one can tell you what to do with the property the city owns. That's up to you. So you have, I think, ultimate control through any development agreements you might strike with people. There might also be the ability to do some of the planning and zoning in advance so that while, if the school building is being demolished and rebuilt, you have some planning and approvals so that when that's complete, people could be ready to go with construction. It takes a while, as you've seen, for projects that are approved, even if they're on a pretty fast track, to get built and finished. And we're seeing that in the projects that are ramping here in the city. They've moved along at a good pace, but it takes time. So being able to overlap the, the planning and the marketing with ongoing demolition and rebuilding of the school, if you do that work upfront in terms of laying out the framework, you know, that might help save some time. Again, there are no assurances about the marketplace. On the other hand, you are near metro station. It's a station that has lost ridership, so the ability to build capacity, development capacity, to take advantage of the void that is, is there at that West Falls Station in terms of its ability to be used, I think is, is a plus. And it's a, it would be a good-sized parcel, very well-located, that ought to be attractive to, to the broader development community. Of course, there are no guarantees on this, so things could go wrong. We could have a, you know, downturn, et cetera. But that's how I would envision it. I think the key thing is to keep it simple. Since the government controls the planning and zoning, you have the ability to change things. So right now, we have basically nothing on the map, very little on the map. And so I think doing, you know, taking appropriate land use and zoning action with the ability to fine-tune it as we need to, it's all within the city's power if we are determined to go forward with that.
Any questions for Mr. Snyder while he's here at the desk?
Ms. Oliver had asked about the risk. Suppose that none of the development happens? And I think that needs to be part of the discussion with the voters because we will, you know, it's a great piece of property. Things ought to go well, but there can be delays. Things might not work out the way that we envision them. And so when we had our town hall meeting and just a few months ago, we laid out a couple of slides of what the anticipated cost of the school program is. It essentially reflects a doubling of our current debt service. We currently pay $6 million a year in debt service. So the estimates for the George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson project would add an additional $6 million per year. That assumes 4% interest in 30-year debt and level debt service.
For what amount?
To issue the 112 million dollars of debt.
Okay, so the tax rate below is separate from the debt above?
Well...
Because that's, that's one thing, I've got a problem with the, how you pay for it is, is key, like you said. But it's not going to be all borrowed or all paid for by taxes. So to me...
Talking worst-case scenario here.
I know, and we need to, because when we go to a referendum, we need to say, this is what it's going to cost, and you have to assume we're paying for it all and the land isn't going to get sold, it's not going to get developed, we're not going to have tax revenues. If we do, that's great, but for planning purposes, we have to assume we're not.
So this is, this is the worst-case scenario, I think arguably. Actually, it might not be. Interest rates could be 8%, and it could be worse than this. But if, you know, these are...
And is 30-year debt our normal debt service?
No, it's not. So our normal debt service is 20-year debt, and our normal debt is level principal, which is a more conservative way to issue debt. It gets it off your books faster and you pay less interest over time. So this is, level debt is, is a way to try to lower that initial cost. It does cost more in interest over the life of the bond, but, you know, we're trying to sort of squeeze this into a layer of something that, that is more feasible. So just, I'll just go through, let me just go through this real, real quickly, just because it's, it's sort of the basic information. So to, to pay for $6 million a year in debt service without any economic development or land exchange is, is 15 cents on the tax rate, just playing it, you know, in a very straightforward way. And so this is what the debt service chart looks like with the city hall project, miscellaneous projects for the general government, miscellaneous projects for the schools, i.e., you know, HVAC and systems and things like that, and then the library project, and then this is the, the project that we're talking about here. So your question is, does it violate our policies? Yes, it does. It goes above our current policy of 12% of, of our, debt service should not exceed 12% of our total expenditures. So part of our goal is to smooth out this peak through the land transaction. And so what we've presented publicly is that if you take a look at the ULI study and our own city consultants' review of the situation, you could reduce that debt service by about 50% to 2/3 is a reasonable expectation in terms of, of reducing that debt service cost through the sale of land plus taxes from the development of the school site. So that would reduce the, the required tax rate increase to 5 cents. That's the way we've modeled it. Now, there are a lot of things that can go in different directions for this, but that's the basic analysis. But again, the, the whole crux of the matter is, when does this revenue come online? And that's really what the P3 process has been trying to close that gap. And if we decouple it, what we're presenting to you is there's still the potential to try to take the city's land to market prior to the sale of the bond. There will be discounting associated with that. And without the P3 process, where the construction of the school is a benefit for the developer, they get some benefit from that, and that might help close that gap. And so if you separate the two, then you're really just going straight with sort of the market for commercial real estate, and there's some additional risk associated with that. But what we would do under the decoupled process is still try to work to explore that option with our, with our consultants to, to try to mitigate the city's risk to the best extent possible. And we think that, you know, there's, there's reason to think that we can be successful in that. I think it will be, you know, on the decoupled process, you will have more competition for the sale of the land, most likely. You will have more bidders, but you will also have that, that gap between when they take, when, when we'd be asking them to make their initial payment and go hard on the property and when they can actually take possession of it. So that's, this is an attempt to answer your question. These are big topics that we've been talking about for six months, but to try to answer them in a, in a concise way.
So maybe the other question that I'd just like to add on to that is, if we used our traditional financing approach of 20 years and, and level principal?
Level principal, right.
Level principal. And if we stayed beneath our policy limits on debt, how much school is that? What's the number? Is that 40 million?
It's about 40 million. I think when we did that analysis for the planning commission, because they asked the same question, it was 37 million is, is what, what that number is, if you, if you structure it that way.
So in a sense, what we're trying to do through these processes is find a way to afford three times more than we can actually afford.
Well, I, I think that, that's one way to look at it. But, you know, I will say that when you're trying to do a, a big project, and a high school is a once-in-a-multi-generation big project, I think it's appropriate to try to explore ways to mitigate that cost. And, and you would do that with your eyes open in terms of what the consequences of that are. And one big consequence of this is this really eats up our capital capacity for 10 years at a minimum. And so as we do this big project and the others, the library, city hall, we then need to take a pause in our capital program in terms of anything major for a significant period of time. And that's something that we've discussed, you know, throughout the CIP planning process, but there are consequences to that as well.
And if all we could do was the 37 or 40 million, you know, what would the schools do with that? I mean, because we haven't asked that question. What if they can't have everything they want? And I, I know, I know this affects students, and I'm not insensitive to that, and I know it affects teachers, and I know that it complicates the operations of the school for a long time. But what if all the city had to give was 37 or 40 million? Have we explored that option?
That would take, I think, a, a brand-new look at what we would do because 40 million, given that, a lot of people forget with the high school, that we can't just even go in and, and modernize the high school because it's not big enough now because we already have trailers, and we're dealing with the growth issue on top of the old facility. So 40 million sounds like a lot of money, but it would go very, very quickly. And we certainly could crunch some numbers there, but it wouldn't go very far for what we actually need for student capacity, for enrollment growth, as well as the life of the building. So it would just be making hard choices on, do you do nothing now but go in and fix HVAC and the roof and, you know, add a wing on somewhere so that at least you'll have classroom space? You know, it's, it wouldn't go very far. And I know that's not a positive answer that we want to hear, but it's, when you're trying to build a high school and you need to expand on both of those facilities, you know, MEH will likely be at capacity this year. You know, it's built for 600, it's sitting just under 600 students right now. So there's a sense of urgency to have seats for students.
I understand that, but I, I do think it's an option that we should have been pursuing for some time now, a little bit more realistically, just so that we knew what we could do. Because we're asking people to take a really big risk and, and potentially to pay an awful lot on the tax rate, and I feel like we haven't really fully explored what is it that we could do with what we can afford.
One dimension of that, of the $37 million option, however, is that I think that is certainly a renovation option, not a new build option. And so that precludes the sale of the land and any tax revenue from commercial development. And 37 is, 37 million is about one-third of, of the cost. And so in terms of this scenario, you don't have the risk of the real estate transaction. But one way to look at it, you know, you certainly deleverage significantly, but you don't have the benefit that we're trying to accomplish with the, with the sale of the land and, and the tax revenue that could be generated there.
Let me ask you a couple of questions about the bond. So the bonds can be issued in tranches, right? So you don't necessarily issue a 112 million dollar bond. You might issue a 15 million dollar bond to cover your first leg of construction, correct? Is that right?
We would, yes, we would do multiple tranches of, of this debt. And, and, and that has been built into remodeling.
So, but it seems to me like you could do, for example, possibly a tranche which includes demo and site work, which wouldn't be, I mean, I would think maybe 10 or 15 million dollars, but you might be able to tell us more what that portion of construction would cost. But to basically clear off the space, and then you could sell the land. In other words, there may be a way to structure this where you don't incur a whole lot of debt until the actual sale takes place. And I know you're trying to get it a couple of years beforehand, which I, I think is going to be a little tough and is going to be a pretty heavy discount. Although the thing I think that we're working in our favor is that we can, in some ways, guarantee the outcome. That's always the risk a developer faces when they... That's always the risk a developer faces when they don't have approvals in hand. They're wondering whether they're going to get the approvals. The good news is, we can say, you're going to get this much density, and this is the price, and let's figure out how to put it all together in a box through the special exception process. But it seems to me you could structure it so that your first tranche of debt is somewhat manageable, and then that would take you to the place where you could maybe demolish a portion that could be used for the sale to the commercial developers. So you wouldn't incur as much risk. Do you understand what I'm trying to say is that if you didn't issue a whole lot of debt, because you really don't need to issue a whole lot of debt till you get heavy into construction, you issue the debt only for the demolition, maybe even just the portion that is needed for the, excuse me, for the area that's going to be sold off, and then you sell off the portion that's going to be sold off. And so that kind of mitigates the risk of having a big debt spike. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I think the way we have modeled it is really two big issuances, because this is about a two-year construction process, and so you can't really string it out a whole lot more than that. We can do a little bit more sensitivity analysis on that, but essentially, we've broken it into two chunks, because that's, you know, it's not a real-long construction process. One other piece from a risk perspective, however, is that once you've done that initial tranche and you've begun the work, you really then are on the conveyor belt to take on the full debt load. And, you know, the focus of our efforts have been to make sure that we have a partner really locked in with an equity contribution that's, you know, the strongest, you know, not a deposit, but an equity contribution, so that we have as many guarantees as we can reasonably have, that the land transaction ultimately will be executed on the schedule that we've laid out. But as you say, that, you know, the goal is to try to narrow that gap in terms of timing as much as possible.
Well, not so much timing, but the balloon of debt, you know? In other words, that's what you're trying to do, is keep that balloon, that real spike, to flatten it out. And it seems to me that could happen if you could actually issue a very small first tranche of debt so that you could sell the land. In other words, just not for $50 million, but maybe for 10 or 15, and then basically sell the land off at that time.
Right.
Let me ask you also, ask you about defeasance. Can we, I presume, load a bond up so that we can defease a portion of it or all of it, so that if we borrow money for a period of time, we can go ahead and use the proceeds of the sale to pay that down, if it were to happen subsequent to the issuance of the debt?
In terms of capitalized interest, or?
Oh, just basically, so let's say we have that spike, but we're not stuck with that spike for the next 20 years or 30 years. We're actually, we'll pay it off a year after, a year later when we get our proceeds from the sale.
Yes, that's possible. We could make, we could shorten the callable period. There's generally a price for that, but that's an option in terms of how we could structure the debt. But I would note that the way that we have been modeling this, to shave, you know, potentially pennies off the tax rate in terms of the cost for the debt service, has been not to prepay or take some of the debt off of our books, but rather to use the sale proceeds to pay interest. And so in terms of policies, that would be new for the city. We don't usually use one-time money to pay recurring debt service costs. And so that's, you know, in terms of our goal here, which is to try to make a very expensive project within the realm of feasibility, our approach has been to shave off the peak of debt service by using sale proceeds for that purpose, not to buy down or reduce the actual issuance of the debt. Because if you do that, your benefit in terms of shaving the peak is not as powerful. It's not as strong. It would be a less risky, you know, it would be a more conservative approach, which you've described, but it doesn't shave the peak in the same way that just using the sale proceeds to pay the debt service cost would.
And so you're proposing to use the sale proceeds like an interest reserve?
That's correct.
And how many years would you propose using that interest reserve? Like, what would be the period before that gets soaked up?
I don't have that chart in front of me, but those are, you know, we've discussed the charts that lay out exactly how that capital reserve would work in terms of shaving the peak. And we can provide that for you. I just don't have it ready to throw up on the screen right here.
Okay. Ms. Hardy?
My question's on the public engagement part of both timelines. On the school side, it sounds like there's actually going to be no public hearing on the school proposals until February of 2017, so the first round would not have review, public review. And so the public presentations would be a month before the referendum and after council's authorized the referendum. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the referendum we're proposing as a, you know, even if we go with the mayor's suggestion of multiple bond tranches, the referendum would be a 112 million, yes or no? Is that kind of essentially the simplified version that would go to the voters?
I'm going to ask Ms. McCosgrove to answer that question.
Yes, I think that's what the plan is at this point.
Do they have a say in kind of the private development side as well? Like, at the referendum, do they get to say, yes, I'm okay with 112, assuming we get private development that looks like this? Or is that something that's not a referendum-type question?
You can't really, you don't really have authority to issue an advisory referendum. So you would be having a referendum that would be solely on whether the city should issue the debt.
And going back to the public engagement on the school side, is the reason why we don't have more public review until February just because of the PPA process as well, which usually don't have public engagement in the first round of responses?
Yes, the first round is more of an RFQ, where all the proposed design-build teams would submit their qualifications. And because it's such a costly process to put their detailed proposals together, you need, in order to get a good response, you need to shortlist. So you pick your three best design-build firms out of the group of submissions that you receive, and then you ask them for their, basically, their design proposals. So you really want to have a design proposal to share until the detailed proposals arrive.
It just seems like for such a big project, a month doesn't seem like sufficient public engagement time between, before the referendums. If we're proposing kind of February to March is the only time, I'd like to see that, more time to do that.
Yeah, that would be their proposals conceptual design. And part of the process of selecting which firm you want to go with will be based on which design do you prefer. And even when that firm is selected, you still go through the entire design process openly. So, you know, that's just their concept. So as long as the core scope of their, of what they propose to do doesn't increase, you still go through your schematic design development, you work through the entire design process with, you know, with the ASAC committee to come up with what the final design will be.
So, yes. Vice Mayor Connolly?
So in comparing the decoupled process with the 3P process that we've been talking about for all these months, it just seems like we've got the, with the, Ms. McCosgrove, if I stray, just let me know if I go too far. But with the 3P process, we've got an equity contribution offered by each of our, each of the proposers. So we are minimized, we're minimizing our risk, basically, because we've got something offered from each of these proposers, right?
I think that is getting into.
Okay.
Content of the proposals. But what we can say is, the city has asked for that.
Okay.
I think stating what has been offered, we cannot speak to.
So the, right, that's fine. So the city has been, we've asked for an equity contribution, and that would potentially minimize our risk. The other thing it minimizes is the opportunity that perhaps this land won't sell if we decouple it. Because if we decouple it, we put ourselves in that additional risk that here we are with, we've now passed a referendum to build a school, we may not be able to sell that property if we end up with the worst-case scenario.
The decoupled scenario really has, I think, what we would describe as market-timing risk. And as Mr. Snyder stated, this is a very valuable piece of property. However, there are cycles. And if you, at the time that you want to go to market, happens to be a low point in the cycle, you've got to wait a couple of months, maybe 24 months, 36 months, to get a better cycle. It's really a timing risk. I think the view is that the land has inherent value, and it will achieve a good value for the city. It's just, you know, being mindful of cycles that could work against us. And the P3 process still has those risks, but it was, by knitting the two projects together, we were trying to mitigate that risk.
But then the risk we take if we do the 3P process is that we accept something now and say, all right, this is the best we can get for this property, whereas if we decouple it, we could get more, but we could get less. So we're making a commitment to, this is the kind of commercial development we'll accept, and this is how much money we're going to take for it, when in three years, it might be worth more, but it might not. We just don't know. So we would be taking the sure thing as our, to minimize the risk. Is that a fair way to think about it, under the current P3?
I think that the decision that you'll be making in the near future doesn't make the final decision of accepting anybody's proposal. It simply would be proceeding to go forward to see what they offer you, and then you would have to make that decision later. Currently, you're just looking at whether to put out the detailed proposals and the request for detailed proposals. So, again, you, and I guess my point in that is that you would have an opportunity, if you didn't like what came in, to not proceed with that at a later point.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
I was going to add, I think the other contrast between the two processes is that in the decoupled process, the land development is a lot more of a public process, in that we are asking, we are doing the land planning publicly. We're getting land sale proposals bid publicly, not in the PP3 process. And I think that's been a big point of community feedback I refer to.
So just if you could take us through a little bit more of that process. Mr. Snyder mentioned that earlier. What we would do is basically, this would be a public process in terms of what we want to have there, what we propose to have there. That would be something that wouldn't be coming from the developers. That would be coming from the city or city council ultimately, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay. Are there other questions on this portion of our discussion? Ms. Oliver?
I just wanted to ask the schools. I mean, I realize that the school construction completion date is a year beyond what you had initially hoped for. But we've also discussed the fact that this is an extraordinarily tight timeframe with really small windows. Are you comfortable that we can all manage the process in a way that would deliver a school under either scenario in September of 2020?
Yeah, and just in reflection, originally, it was 18, and then we bumped it to 19. And this is the first time that council and school board have seen 2020, so it's now back one more year. And I think we are comfortable with either one, that we can definitely get a school built if we get the process going, and that's what's really key. Because the last two years, we've done a lot of discussion and a lot of trying to move the project forward. And I would say, from my perspective, the scariest thing is, how do we keep George Mason going for the next four years without investing heavily in our CIP next year or the year after for the things that could fail? Because every HVAC unit in that building is already end-of-life and past that. So that's the biggest challenge, is now we're looking at four years from now. But I'm confident we could definitely get a high school built in that time. And Arcadis has weighed in on that for us, in detail, very, very much detail.
Yeah, I mean, I think the bigger question there is, if March ends up being too fast, then in effect, the referendum can't be until November, and that would probably push it another year, even though it's a matter of months, just because of the way the timing goes. And with the primary and the general, it's either really March or November, unfortunately.
And that March window is tight in that it also depends on negotiations, correct? And discussions and responses?
Are you talking about on the, for the referendum?
Yes.
I mean, we feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, but I think it depends on which process.
Right.
Because with the decoupled, the referendum's written, and, you know, the time is going prior to receiving the proposals. But with the current version, you need the proposal in first.
So would it be fair to say that if we wanted to hit September of 2020 at the latest, that the current process gives us a better chance of doing that?
Meaning the P3?
Yeah.
About the same, really?
Yeah, about the same.
Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess there are two other things to be discussing. One is, should we go into closed session? Is there any reason to go into closed session? Do people have comments or questions that can only be discussed?
I believe that we can, because we don't have a quorum.
Oh, you left one. Oh, yeah, I got you.
You would have to go into closed.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, it looks like you lost a member during our meeting. Actually, we did too, actually. Okay. So neither one of us have, no, we have a quorum. We do have a quorum, okay. So is there any desire to go into closed session from anyone? Okay. It sounds like there's not a need to do that or desire to do that. So I guess maybe we should talk about going forward, a schedule for going forward for a decision point. Mr. Shields, I think you had mentioned the idea of having this be taken up at city council on, is it the 13th? Is that the day, or?
That is correct. We have a work session on the 6th, and then a regular meeting on the 13th. And what I had proposed is that the council, just under its normal schedule, if it were ready to take an action to authorize the next step, which, you know, either of these two that we've discussed tonight, or this morning, would be scheduled for the 13th. And I think the school board is intending to take it up at their next regular scheduled meeting as well. I should have stated at the beginning of the meeting that no votes were anticipated for this morning meeting. This is really just a discussion to answer questions and to lay out some options in support of a decision that would be at your next regular meeting.
Are people comfortable scheduling this for, did you say the 13th?
Yes, sir.
Are people comfortable with that being a decision date on this matter?
Of course, of course.
So what would that resolution look like, or that ordinance look like? It's either, we're going to vote to issue the RFDP, or we're going to vote to end this current P3 process?
That's correct.
Both the school board and the city council have to have the same vote.
Well, both have to, if you want to continue with RFDP, both have to vote for it. To, both have to vote to act in that way, because you're in this together. If either one voted not to move forward, then the process would not move forward at this time. And I think, obviously, there might be some question, but if it was a final vote by both parties, and one said, we're moving forward, and the other said, we're not, and that was final, we would know we would not be moving forward, and then we would end that process and move to a different plan.
So.
So they don't have to be the same, but you need both to move forward with the 3P.
Could I just clarify? So the only decision we would be making is about the current process. We wouldn't be making a decision, we would be making it on the basis of an unknown alternative process, because nothing would be binding in the alternative process, correct?
Well, there's not a need to, for the, in fact, there's not a need for you to act now on either, but I think you want to make some decision about the proposals that you have. But you could, you could choose to make a decision about how, if, in the alternative, if that were your decision, you could make a decision at that time about how to move forward, but it wouldn't be required, certainly.
So in effect, it could be making a negative decision about one, but not a positive decision about something else, which is not preferable.
But to keep with this timeline, something has to happen soon. If we made a negative decision about one, we'd have to make a positive decision about another pretty quickly. We couldn't.
Correct. To keep the process going and get the school. To, to keep the process going and get the school opened in 2020, yes, you would have to move to, so that the schools knew that they could move forward with their process pretty quickly.
Yeah, and in terms of voting, our thought was to look at doing that Tuesday, but given the fact that we don't have a majority here, and we've had people traveling all week, that's the intent, but obviously, we can't guarantee that until we poll whether people are ready to vote. But that, that is the intent.
Okay. Yes, sir? I'm sorry, yeah, of course.
So because none of us can predict the future here, and we're all just sort of guessing about what the real estate's going to look like in four years, or the only solid numbers we have are that a school will cost us $112 million with an addition to the middle school. That's about the only solid number that we have. Everything else is just, we're guessing, we're hoping, we're taking that risk. So our original intent with doing the P3 is, we're going to mitigate that risk a little bit. The downside is, we have commercial development that we may or may not love in these proposals. If we don't follow through with the RFDP, then we are still taking the risk that we may end up with the same kind of commercial development, with a little more community engagement, two years from now. But we've taken on a huge risk, a financial risk of bonding $112 million for a school. Is that a reasonable synopsis? I, my concern is that, it sounds like we're headed down not doing the RFDP. And if that's the consensus, then that's the consensus. But my concern is that we're going to take on a huge risk, in the hope that we get something better, but we may or may not get something better. Is that, I'm just wondering if that's a reasonable synopsis, or if you can allay me of that fear?
I can't allay all the fears, that's for sure. What I can say is that we will continue to work hard to have a structure, whether it's the P3 process or a decoupled process with two parallel tracks, to minimize the city's risk. And this Phase 2, this detailed RFDP, was an avenue to answer our questions. Can we really mitigate this risk in the way that we had hoped to? That's what that next step was really designed to nail that down. We've had discussions, but we haven't nailed them down. So if we stop that process, we won't get those questions answered. We will then embark on this new path, where we'll try to get our answers, questions answered via, you know, the schedule and the steps that we've laid out here. So there will be probably a longer period of time where we will be unclear in terms of what the value of the land is, and what that structure of a transaction will look like. Now, in that, what the decoupled process looks at, we'll develop that RFP for the, for the land transaction, with commercial real estate expertise. And we'll structure it in a way that will hopefully maximize the value of the land, but also bring some of that value as far forward as possible. And that will be the balancing trick, because there will be some erosion of value, you know, naturally, the more you try to pull those payments forward. That's the basic issue. The other sort of, I guess, sort of significant issue is that the P3 process was attractive because of the coordination that would naturally occur between the commercial development and the school. You'd have one entity that you're working with, and so you'd be able to work through all those, those issues, those rubbing points between the two activities. And they will both be very significant activities. And so that was, you know, that was an attraction to having one entity do both. And so in terms of a management challenge, having two entities do the different activities is something that we'll need to work through.
And I was just going to add to that, on the coordination side, that, you know, we talk a lot about the money side, but when we're going into school construction, there are two huge components, and one is instructional quality. You know, we don't want to go into a process where we can't have three years without science labs for our students to do chemistry, or, I mean, we have to be very thoughtful. And building schools, it is complex, because there are certain spaces that are needed for instructional quality in a high school of our caliber. And the other is student safety. And when we talk about the coordination, that was one thing that, in the P3, because it is so coordinated in that we know who is, who is developing on that land. And I just, you know, to be thoughtful, I think somebody asked a question earlier about having two different, having the development going here with one set of contractors, and having a school being built here with another set of contractors, we can very much control, I feel like, the school side, because we're, we're not going to contract with somebody who has not built schools. They understand school safety, they understand how students move in and around the campus, but we don't know who's going to be doing the development side. And having both of those at the same time just is not feasible for school safety in the proximity of that campus. So I just, instructional quality and safety are huge elements that have to be, we have to be very thoughtful about that, and not forget that it's not just about money. It's, we have children there.
Ms. Hardy, I'm sorry, Ms. McCroskey?
I was just going to answer, miss, make another note about Ms. Connolly's question about risk. Keep in mind, again, the question here is, do you move forward with the request for detailed proposals? And you don't know at this time what you will get in response to those. So there is at this point, and still a good amount of risk to both, because you don't have answers on that end either. Now, it certainly, you would be moving into the process with that, once you got those detailed proposals, if you entered into a comprehensive agreement, then you would have less risk. But at this point, you don't know what the outcome of that process will be.
Ms. Hardy, did you have something you want to say?
Two things. To make sure I'm understanding, in the current P3 process, the financial risk is that despite having a partner in hand, the bond amount we're still proposing is still $112 million, but hoping that we will get equity payments, we may or may not get, depending on who we go with, of whatever those tranches were later on, right? So the financial risk to the city is still a bond of $112 million in either process. So I want to make sure that's clear, because that's, I don't want to say that, well, on this one, it's 112 minus whatever we get, because I think upfront, we still have to front the $112 million. Okay. And then the second question is, going back to the mayor's question of whether we want to go into closed session, do we think it's valuable to go and revisit kind of where we are with the two bidders, just to make sure everyone's on the same page with the responses and development since then? Or do people feel pretty comfortable with the information that we have? I know it's been a while since we picked this back up, but there were a few things I heard that sounded like we were unclear where the proposals stood, or maybe some misinformation. So I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page with where we are, and the risks that we may or may not be taking.
Well, let me just ask, is there any new information since we were last updated from you, that's relevant, or, you know, significant?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have, feel like their recollection needs to be refreshed as to the nature of these proposals? I'm going to say, given that, I'm not sure it's needed to go into closed session. We can also, anyone can have a private conversation with you, Mr. Shields or Ms. McCroskey, to get the details, if anyone individual feels like they want to get refreshed as to the details of the proposal. Given that, is there any other business that people want to talk about or transact relating to this matter right now? Okay, and before you do that, I just have a question. Wyatt, or Mr. Shields, can we put this on the webpage, or make sure people have these publicly available?
Yes.
Okay. And are they available now? I saw some people taking pictures in the back and the like. Are they on the counter over there?
We had a, I think we printed out 25 copies, and so if we ran out, then I apologize for that. This will be posted on Granicus, and I think with Board Docs as well.
Okay. Vice McConnell?
So this is another timeline question. Suppose when we vote, we vote, yes, we're going to go ahead with RFDP, because we want to see where this process takes us. What does that, and then we get the proposals in, and we say, oh, forget it, we don't like these. What does that do to the Plan B timeline? Does that, push that back a little bit?
Meaning if we then looked at it, didn't like it, and said, okay, we've gone as far as we can go, now we're going to decouple.
Now we're going to decouple. So there's a risk there, too. If we say, yeah, we'll do the RFDP, we get something we don't like, then what does that do, Mr. Jones, to that timeline that we've set out here with the decoupled?
Yeah, it would push, push the start of the decoupled back to, end of September, you know, when we expect to get the, would expect to get the detailed proposals in. And I would have to look at it, because then that would push your referendum from March back to the November again. And I would have to take another look at the schedule for the decoupled to see if we could still hit 2020 or not.
So then it's safe to say, if we say yes to the RFDP at this point, and then get the responses, don't like them, then we are in effect pushing the process to have a November 2017 referendum instead of a March 2017 referendum? Right, okay.
Okay, is there anything else we should be talking about? Mr. Lawrence?
No, I would just say, I think the thing we're all struggling with is sort of the chicken and the egg. On the one hand, we, we know what we can afford now, given the current tax rate and the current debt policy. What we don't really know is, what is the community willing to pay for over and above that? So part of our problem is, I think, when we say, what can we afford, right now, we don't know, because it comes down to what would the community be willing to pay for separate from the reality that exists today. So we're trying to find out what the answer to that is through the referendum, but that's when you've already decided what the school cost is, as opposed to saying, what would you be willing to pay? So I think it's, it's a chicken and egg thing, and I don't have a solution, it just, it's awkward, because honestly, we don't know what the community, what the traffic would bear. And that's kind of the first thing you need to know to be able to go forward, and we can't really get that answer easily.
Is there anything else? Anyone else have anything to say before we adjourn? No? Okay, so I guess, thank you all for coming out. Thank you in the public for being here as well, and we'll be talking to you all, I'm sure, very soon. Thanks again.